All right, here I'll call the order of the council meeting on February 28th at 7:32. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, considered republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every human has its own.
Roll call, please.
Alder Allen.
He's not here yet.
Absent, delayed. Alder Aradafra.
Here.
Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Herbs.
Also not here yet.
Thank you. Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Strassman.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You do have a quorum here.
Excellent, thank you. All right, public appearances and agenda items, we don't have anything here unless something came in last second, but we can keep moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Second.
By Gabriella, signed by Shannon. Anything that people want to pull out separately on this one at all? All right, don't see anything, so we can go ahead and vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? That is approved, administrator's report.
Good evening, everyone. Few notable items occurring over the next seven or eight days. Tomorrow, as a reminder, the ARPA-TID investment plan amendments are due at 4:30. Please submit any amendments that you may have to Misty. Also tomorrow, the police department had rescheduled their meeting from last, the community meeting from last week due to the weather to 5:30 PM tomorrow, March 1st, at Redeemer Church in the Jamestown neighborhood on King James. The city continues to implement open gov applications, and tomorrow we're going live with four additional processes through the city here. Those are architectural and design review, conditional use permits, land division, and rezoning requests. March 7th at 8:00 AM is the Fitchburg Faith Leaders. All of you should have received an invitation to that meeting from Lisa. That meeting will be here at City Hall. On March 8th, we have two events. The event recognizing the naming of the Francis Huntley-Cooper Council Chambers will be here in the council chambers at 5:00 PM. And there is also a public information meeting at 6:30 PM on March 8th at Fire Station Number 3 for the Sine Road reconstruction project. Any questions?
All right, seeing nothing, we can keep moving to Plan Commission. Randy?
Okay, very good, thank you. The first item, the motion to postpone to the April 25th council meeting certified survey map, CS-2482-22.
Signed by Julia, and you want to speak to why?
Yes, the agent, William Clemens, there's still some issues with the consolidated easement agreement, so they're just asking for additional time. And Plan Commission approved as well, to move it out to the April 19th Plan Commission, so. There's a reason for the postponement.
Any questions before we vote? All right, then all in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed nay? All right, that is postponed, next one.
Motion to approve Resolution R-50-23, formerly CS-2496-23, approving certified survey map request by Amy Nymczek, Agent for CertCo, Inc., to approve a certified survey map creating one total parcel on lands associated with 5321 Verona Road.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, did Plan Commission approve?
Plan Commission approved.
And what's this about?
Well, this is a kind of something that's been around for a while, but it's proposing to combine five parcels and some remnant right-of-way land into one lot on a newly proposed CSM. This was approved back in June of 2021, but the CSM approval expired before it could be recorded, so really it's just reapproval so that it can be recorded. It's just housekeeping.
All right, any questions at all? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? That's approved, anything else for Plan Commission?
No, nothing further, thank you.
All right, then we'll go to Public Works. I don't see Dave here yet. Jim, do you want to take these?
Sure. Yeah, motion to approve Resolution R-237-22, accepting subdivision improvements for Phase 1B in the plat of Highfield.
Signed by Randy, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
And you want to speak to this?
Yeah, this is our typical agreement, just accepting the improvements that our city staff has looked at it and everything's okay.
All right, any questions at all? Seeing nothing, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed nay? All right, that is approved, next one.
Yes, motion to approve Resolution R-238-22, accepting subdivision improvements for Phase 1A in the plat of Highfield Reserve.
Signed by Julia, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
And what's this one?
The same thing, just accepting.
Different phase of the same neighborhood, all right.
Yes.
Sounds good. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, that one's approved, next one.
Okay, motion to approve Resolution R-25-23, resolution releasing a public sanitary sewer easement on Lot 2 of CSM 8023.
Second.
Signed by Randy, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Plan Commission approve?
Plan Commission approved.
All right, what's this one?
Yeah, if I got this right, you know, the sewer was installed with the easement, and now it's time for that easement to be released.
All right, sounds good. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That one's approved, next one.
Okay, a motion to approve Resolution R-30-23, final resolution exercising police powers and levying special assessments for Central Park Place, East Shore Parkway, and Green Marketplace improvements in the city of Fitchburg, Wisconsin.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this one?
Mr., you want to take this one, if you're...
I am, I'm sorry, which one are we on?
The fourth one, R-3023.
Oh, absolutely. So the special assessment was approved by council at the preliminary resolution back in 2019. Since then, the roads have all been constructed. It is Central Park Place, East Shore Parkway, and Green Marketplace. Those have been construction, final costs have all been tabulated, and now we're ready to levy the final special assessment amount. So there's only a dozen or so parcels that are actually impacted by this special assessment. The list is included in the documentation, and it's based on our final cost, and that gets charged back to those benefiting property owners.
Any questions?
So my first question is, have those parcel owner been notified about this?
Go ahead, Misty.
So they were definitely notified at the preliminary assessment stage. My understanding is the engineer that worked on this project also had communication with those property owners throughout the project.
Okay. Can I ask another question? So Misty, on page, I don't know which page this is, where is the table with the numbers? You know, so the assessment value, this is the amount that each parcel will be assessed to the owners?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Anyone else? Doesn't look like it. All right, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That one's approved, next one.
Motion approving to approve Resolution Number R-32-23, resolution accepting agreement for engineering services for oversight of Lacy Road improvements.
Signed by Randy, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this one?
Yes, due to construction, that's going to be over there, we need someone that's going to be basically overseeing the project and doing the inspection, make sure everything is correct.
All right, I know we do this for lots of projects, because staff does not have, we don't have enough staff to do this for all our projects. Any questions on this one? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved, number six.
Yeah, number six. Yeah, motion to approve Resolution Number R-33-23, authorizing Amendment 2 to the South Sine Road Reconstruction Design Services Contract with KL Engineering.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this about?
Yeah, it was some extra work that needed to be done to actually redesign the project to do the various things, so this is basically to give KL the ability to do that design work.
All right, any questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved.
Motion to approve Resolution R-35-23, 2023 Annual Purchase of Chemicals.
Signed by Gabriella, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
And what's this?
This is chemicals for our water supply fluoride that we add to the water supply.
We do this every year. All right, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. All right, next one.
Motion to approve Resolution Number R-38-23, improving contract with Helm Service for the Community Center Boiler Replacements.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and what's this one?
Tim, you want to take this one?
Are you there, Tim? All right, thank you.
Yeah, not a problem. So the boilers at the community center have seen the end of their useful service life, so this is just the replacement of those boilers.
All right, we want to keep them hot over in the community center, in the senior center, we don't want to freeze them all over there. Any questions on this one? All right, then we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That one's approved, next one.
Yeah, motion to approve Resolution Number R-39-23, accepting agreement for engineering services for well number 12 and Tower D.
Second.
Signed by Randy, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and what's this one?
Yes, I'll let Tim take this one.
All right, Tim, go ahead.
Have our maps here.
Sure, the capital improvement plan for the city included the design and construction of well number 12 and Tower D for the city. So this is for the design, for Strand to do the design and construction, engineering inspection. This also includes the unidirectional flushing for the water distribution system.
All right, any questions, Gabriella?
Yeah, this didn't occur to me at Finance, but we've discussed in the past about designing wells and pumps and lifts in the future to include solar panels that could take on some of the energy burden. Is that something that can be considered with this project?
Tim?
I think in the scope, they, we either have looked at it already, or it's in their scope to look at it as part of the design process, so that will be something we'll look into if we haven't already.
Okay, is that something you could just confirm?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved, next one.
Motion to approve Resolution Number R-40-23, approving an agreement and/or permit between the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, and the city of Fitchburg to reconstruct and improve the Badger State Bike Trail as part of the Lacy Road construction process.
Second.
Signed by Randy, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Plan Commission approve?
Plan Commission approved.
All right, what's this one, Jim?
Yeah, due to the work that we are going to be done on that road, and it's going to involve the Badger State Trail, we have to enter into an agreement with those entities.
All right, any questions on this one? All right, seeing none, we can go ahead and vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved, next one.
Yes, motion to approve Resolution Number R-41-23, approving First Amendment to the Agreement for Subdivision Improvements in the plat of Highfield Reserve.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
All right, and what's this about?
Tim, could you explain this one, please?
Yeah, the subdivider has requested an alternate schedule for completion of the infiltration facilities within the plat to reduce the contamination of the engineered soil during building and construction. So this amendment is needed to allow for these improvements to be completed at a different schedule than what was originally listed in the final, in the first agreement.
All right, any questions at all? Does not look like it, so we can go ahead and go to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, that one's approved. One more, Jim.
Yep, motion to approve ordinance number 2023-03, Amending Chapter 68 to extend the 35 mile per hour speed limit on Seminole Highway.
Second.
Signed by Randy, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Yes, Finance approved.
All right, what's this one about?
Yeah, since the, at the Seminole and Lacy Road intersection is going to be a roundabout there, so just going to reduce the speed coming into that roundabout to 35 miles an hour.
All right, I believe that's what it is, on Seminole Highway all the way to the north now to Madison, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, any questions on that? All right, I don't see anything, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. Anything else for Public Works, Jim?
No.
That's enough? You guys should do something on that board, geez.
Did my fair share.
Yeah, that's a lot. All right, we can go to Park Commission, Julia.
We are meeting on March 2nd, please.
All right, Library Board, she is not here. Commission on AG Newell, Dave is not here. How about RCC?
We meet next on March 13th.
All right, what about TTC?
We meet next on March 9th.
All right, what about SITA?
Nothing to report.
Nothing, all right. Ag and Rural Affairs?
Ag and Rural Affairs met last Tuesday, a week ago, it was at the 21st. We met at Four Winds Farm for the annual meeting, and besides yourself and City Administrator Chad Breckland, and most of city department heads were present, and questions were asked and answered, and it was good evening by all.
Thank you, Maria McKenzie, for letting us see the space.
Yeah, very much. She offered the space once again, like last year, and we do thank her, yeah.
All right, any questions at all? All right, we can move on to EMS.
Next meeting is March 16th.
All right, Bicycle Committee?
No updates.
All right, Tree Advisory? All right, Landmark Preservation?
No report.
All right, what about Housing?
Our next meeting is Monday, March 13th at 5:00 PM.
All right, HNIJ isn't here, but I think someone else is on HNIJ. Who's that, Randy?
I am. We meet next Wednesday, I believe, the 8th, regarding grant, grant funding, so.
You're making decisions on?
Decisions, yes. I don't have a total dollar amount, but if I remember correctly from Finance, our conversation is around $125,000 request. Maybe it was from this morning's department head meeting, yeah.
All right, great. All right, let's go on to Finance then.
Okay, very good. On to Finance. Motion to approve Resolution R-29-23, adopting the 2024 through 2033 Capital Improvement Plan CIP Schedule.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, and do you want to speak to this?
Sure, sure. Misty can weigh in if she chooses, but really the resolution provides the schedule to be used for accomplishing the adoption of the city's 2024 through 2033 Capital Improvement Plan CIP. And from my understanding, nothing has really changed much from years past.
Misty, anything you want to add?
Nope, you did a great job. Thanks, Randy.
All right, any questions or comments at all?
I have a question. Misty, you know, the deadline for submitting the amendment is July 5th, so that one is, when it's going to be the, is this going to be a long weekend? So it's going to be Monday? How is it going to work that weekend? Because it's the 4th of July weekend, so.
Yeah, so in the past, council has asked for the flexibility for the amendments to be prepared by you guys during weekends and holiday weekends, so tried to accommodate that in the schedule, but still need to be able to have time for me to get done what I need to get done.
So it sounds like, you know, typically it might have actually been June 30th is the deadline, but giving people an extra weekend to put in amendments by doing it on the 5th instead?
Yep, so Wednesday is, July 5th is a Wednesday, so normally it would be due that Monday, but because there's that holiday in there of Tuesday, gave the extra couple days.
So people get more time this year.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so no, yeah.
More questions at all? All right, seeing nothing else, I guess we go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That is approved, next one.
All right, next one. Motion to approve Resolution R-36-23, the 2023 Payment Service Network Fees.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella, did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
And what's this?
Well, over the last several years, the utility has offered online payments for utility bills. The utility offers the service as a free, fee-free service to our customers, so we've done this since COVID, and we, let's see if I have my notes here, we've done this, we've continued to do this as with COVID, so we're taking advantage of paying the utility bills online. We're going to continue, currently they're paid out of the sewer portion of the bill. From my understanding, and Misty can correct me, that later this year, we will submit an application to the Public Service Commission for that entire fee to be spread about, over the sewer and the water portion. Would you like to weigh in on that, Misty?
Yeah, the only thing I would add, everything you said was accurate, the fees that we're currently paying, because it's fee-free to the customer, obviously the city or the utility still has to pay those fees, so those fees then are recovered through the rates, sewer rates currently that we charge to all of our customers.
All right, questions or comments at all? I don't see anything, so we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That is approved, next one.
All right, motion to approve Resolution R-37-23, Contract Review Workflow Process.
Signed by Gabriella, did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this?
Is Terry on, or is it Terry?
No, no Terry.
I can cover this one. So we work with Navient to make updates and upgrades to our on-base system, and this particular contract will take a manual process for contract review. They can only be performed by one person at a time, and they will develop a process that will allow for simultaneous review and approval of contracts, and integrate that into our agenda and AP approval processes through on-base.
All right, questions, comments at all? It sounds like we're moving forward in the future. That's great. All right, we're going to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. Anything else for Finance?
Uh, no, nothing else.
All right, what about Personnel?
The organizational study for the city, for staffing study by Baker Tully is ongoing, and you might see an email from Sarah, either you have or you will in the near future, to schedule a meeting with them. I believe they're going to talk to all the council members in addition to talking to staff, so keep an eye out for that if you want to participate. And we meet next week, March 8th, at 4:00 PM.
All right, Public Safety, Dave isn't here. Shannon, are you the vice chair?
Yeah.
All right.
No report.
No, do you have a meeting today? Oh, okay. All right, then we can go to unfinished business. All right, it looks like this is a Public Works thing. Jim, you got one more?
Yep.
You thought you were done.
Oh, I knew this was coming. Motion to approve Resolution R-42-23, acceptance of the proposal from Masters Building Solutions for the Fitchburg Library Chiller Heater Project.
Second.
Signed by Randy, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, what's this about?
Well, we need to have the chillers replaced. Apparently, we've been having issues with that system two years after the library was actually built, replacing compressors and everything else like that. So hopefully with the new system going in, this will last a little bit longer than 11 years.
All right, Tim, anything you want to add at all?
I can pipe in unless you want to, Tim, since you're kind of coming into this one after the fact.
Sure, you can, Chad.
All right, I don't want to steal your thunder if you had something that you were bringing here, so. As Alder Wheeler pointed out, there has been a history of poor performance from our existing chiller system, and this, I want to make, just make sure that the council is aware that what you're approving tonight is only for the equipment, and the equipment has about a 12 to 18 month lead time on it being delivered to the city. We'll be working with our design consultants, Strand and Associates, once we have an estimated delivery date to then bid out for the installation for this particular system as well. So it's a bit of a two-part project at this point in time.
And from what I remember, the original system was kind of a custom system, and this is more of an off-the-shelf one, which should hopefully make it easier to repair, is that correct?
Yeah, that is, that is generally correct, and we are certainly hoping we'll get a lot longer lifespan out of the one we're installing than the one we currently have.
All right, so we're cooling the library and heating the senior center. Any other questions at all? All right, we can go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. Anyone want to volunteer to make motion for this next one? All right.
I move approval of Resolution R-5323, Resolution Ratifying the Emergency Proclamation.
Signed by Julia on that one, and you want to cover this? You want to do, all right.
Yeah, I can cover this one. Obviously, with the weather situation last week in particular, the potential for significant icing and the concern for power grid, in conversation with local emergency management, Joe Pulvermacher, and also Dane County Emergency Management, the determination was made to contact Mayor Richardson to do a proactive proclamation of a disaster declaration, so in the event there would have been any sort of power outages, we would have had this step already addressed, which could have allowed for more efficient delivery of emergency resources from both the county and the state. So this was done, obviously, again, as a proactive measure. It was aligned very similarly to the timeframe in which Dane County had done their proclamation of emergency declaration, and actually expired on Thursday at noon. So state statute indicates as more of a procedural matter, and to a certain extent, a check and balance on the mayor's authority, that once a declaration has been issued, that it should be brought to the council at their next meeting. So before you, you have the opportunity to ask any questions and discuss it, but ultimately, what the request would be is that you ratify this declaration. It has already expired, so it's an after-the-fact ratification at this point in time.
And we did something similar when COVID actually hit, and at that point, obviously, it was going a lot longer, and so we approved at that point in time, but thankfully we didn't need it, but just in case, it was, it would enable us to get help a little bit quicker and take out some red tape, so. You can vote on it, but ultimately, it doesn't matter, it's already expired. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. And next, we've got action on a claim from Randy Steinhauer, and I see that Mr. Steinhauer is online here, and I think it probably would be best if you want to maybe tell us what your claim's about, what's going on here, and then I can, you know, ask staff to kind of give a staff perspective from there, but if you want to let us know what's going on, that'd be, I think, a good place to start.
Sure, hi, everyone. I sent in a claim and damage form, and I've been working with Tracy. We, back in December, there was a tree that was leaning over our property from the Dolly Park, and they came out and looked at... And, uh, they came out and looked at it, the park department did, and said that, yeah, it looks like it needed to be removed. And, uh, they said it was too soft, so they were going to wait till it hardened up a little bit, the ground firmed up, so they'd get their equipment in. In the meantime, the tree fell unfortunately, and it damaged a couple of my fences. And so I sent in supporting documents, and I believe Tracy sent that. I last heard to the insurance company. I don't know if that's right, Tracy, or not, but I think they were going to take a look at it and see if there was any liability.
All right, I don't know if Tracy or Chad, you want to kind of follow up on that?
Yeah, I can cover that. Um, so we did send this to our city's insurance company. That's, uh, CIVMCC, Cities and Villages Municipal Insurance Company, I believe is what the acronym, uh, stands for. And they reviewed all the pertinent claim information, and they have recommended that the claim be denied under discretionary immunity. Uh, they've indicated that inspecting, uh, trees, uh, on a municipality or how often and how we inspect our trees is a discretionary action, and trimming and maintenance of city trees is also discretionary, and that municipalities have immunity for that discretionary action under state statute eight ninety-three point eight zero parent four. Uh, our city attorney has, uh, indicated that if there is a desire to have any discussion as a result of this claim, uh, that the council should, uh, postpone action and move to have a closed session, uh, at an, at an upcoming meeting if you choose not to act on the claim at this point.
Yeah, so the options are, we can act on it tonight. If you want to have discussion in closed session, we have to postpone to the next meeting. Um, I, my guess is that she probably would say that you should have limited discussion, probably, at this point. I don't know.
City attorney would say we should have zero discussion at this point.
All right. Randy's right.
I guess that puts it under that. I think I'll go to my insurance company then and see what they could do.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all righty. Very good. Thank you.
All right, so I think it sounds like, uh, probably if someone wants, if someone wants to do a motion to deny the claim, you can do that. Otherwise, we can, I mean, if you want to wait and discuss it more in closed session, you can, but, um...
I think there's a need to.
Well, we do kind of have to do, uh, yeah, I think we have to make them take some action on it, but, um, it sounds like the recommendation is denial, uh, if you want to do anything different, so. Does someone want to do a motion? It's an unfortunate situation.
I'll do it.
All right, Jim.
Want to make a motion to deny the notice of claim from Randy, um, Steinhauser as recommended by our insurance company and the city attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gabriella. All right, one last chance for comment if you want to. All right.
No need, nope. All right, thanks.
All right, all, uh, everyone who, I guess, is in favor of denial, say aye. So if you want to deny, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is denied. All right. Going on to mayor's reports, uh, the one thing I wanted to mention is the governor released his budget today. One of the things that is in there, uh, that I got a call about yesterday is they are looking for a second, uh, type one youth facility in the state for essentially a youth, for jail for a better, for lack of a better term. And they are recommending to put that in Fitchburg down, and the property the Department of Corrections already owns where Oak Hill is. And so it'd be a thirty-two-bed facility down in that area. They've got, I think, a couple hundred acres down there. And they would also expand the girl academy from six beds to sixteen beds that is already operating down there with six beds. And they perceive if everything goes through, it would open around twenty twenty-nine, so it wouldn't open for a while. However, it's the budget process, and based on two years ago, Democrats or the Republicans threw out the budget and read it themselves, and it's very possible it won't be in the budget. However, I think it's important just to know that that's something that they're looking at doing, and if you see anything on the news, that you are aware of that, so. Joe?
Do you have any idea who the state representative or state senator for that particular area where the proposed site would be?
It would probably be Mike Barr, I think. Well, maybe Jenna, actually. Probably Jenna Jacobson is, and then she is Melissa Agard then. But the lines are weird. So it's probably Mike Barr, because I'm Mike Barr on, I mean, that's a little far south, but I think it's probably Mike Barr. And then that would be, um, Diane Halselbion would be the state senator. All right, uh, so that's all I have for now, and I can go to District Four. So we start with this, uh, meeting for all the reports, Jim?
Nothing to report.
All right, Randy?
Uh, nothing to report.
All right, go.
Uh, I got two things. Um, number one, um, and I'll probably mention this at the next two council meetings. Um, the Boys and Girls Club is having a reality store on Thursday, March thirtieth, um, from three to five P M. at the Allied location. Uh, it's for youth, uh, sixth to twelfth grade. It's basically a simulation of what life would be like after high school. Um, I believe the registration for that is on the Boys and Girls Club of Dane County website. And, uh, registration is still open, so, um, that is one thing. And then I am blanking on the other thing I was going to say. Um, but, uh, Dave also is, uh, logging in momentarily, so he might have an update at the end.
All right.
So after maybe District Three goes, uh, he'll be on, hopefully.
I'll give him a chance if he shows up here. All right, yeah, there you go. All right, Julia?
Um, so, yeah, something that I already mentioned to Chad. I received a couple of emails from constituents talking about if we are going to do the No May Mo this year. So I talked to Chad and I mentioned to you yesterday, too, and I don't know, maybe something that we should consider doing this year?
Yeah, I will reach out to staff and see where we're at with our ability to, to do that. We do have a little bit of time, obviously, to try to put something in place, so I'll, uh, update council on that.
And also, um, I want to, um, congratulate my colleague here for, the city of Fitchburg has been in the news for very good reasons, so, uh, congratulations, Gabriella, Gabriella, for your world record. So, uh, I think it was a nice event, and lots of people show up, and, you know, and, and the name of Fitchburg has been in the news, so, so congratulations. Yeah.
All right, Gabriella?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the, we're now the home of the largest collection of four-leaf clovers to match our, our logo, so. One thing, uh, that I forgot to mention, RCC, the Waterway Cleanup has been scheduled. It's not till April fifteenth, but I did want to just get it on everyone's radar. I just forwarded the information to all the council members. Um, it is on the city website under Waterway Cleanup, so you can hold April fifteenth from nine to eleven A M. And there's going to be four locations, just as in past years, Dunn's Marsh, Corey Hill, Swan Creek, and Yarmouth Greenway. And all the information is on the website. Thanks.
All right, thanks. And the Swan Creek always has a big turnout. I've done that for the last few years. All right, Shannon?
No report.
No report. All right, I do not see Dave yet, so I guess he's just out of luck.
Could, could I mention one more thing? Um, uh, there is another event, and this is just for, you know, anybody that has, uh, sixth and seventh graders. Um, the Badger Pre-College, uh, program is hosting a two-day, um, Latino Youth Summit. Um, it's free. Um, it's for any young person in sixth and seventh grade. Um, and it's going to be kind of two days on campus of, um, guest speakers, um, workshop presenters. Um, it'll be focused on STEAM, so, um, science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. So, um, again, open to seventh and eighth graders. If you go to the, if you just look up Latino Youth Summit, Wisconsin, um, it should pop up right away under the Badger College office.
All right, thank you. All right, that's all I've got. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, second by Shannon. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, we are adjourned.